Good evening, members of the audience. There's copies of the agenda on the back table that we'll be referring to tonight. This meeting of the Kern County Planning Commission is called to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Ashley.
Here.
Commissioner Brooks. Commissioner Dunbar.
Here.
Commissioner Oliver.
Here.
Commissioner Skidmore.
Here.
Mr. Van Wijn.
Here.
Mr. Murphy.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Ms. Simon.
Here.
Commission member announcements or reports? Would any commissioner or staff member like to make an announcement or report? Okay, approval of the minutes. You've received a copy of the minutes of the July 10, 2025 meeting. Are there any corrections? If there's no corrections, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
No, second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Items withdrawn or requests for continuance? I see none. Consent items. Mr. Murphy, will you review the consent agenda?
I will. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. So these are items scheduled before your commission which are being recommended for approval by staff. The applicant has been informed of any special conditions and has no objection. The hearing on these items may be expedited if no member of the commission or audiences wish to comment or ask any questions on these cases. We have two items that are on consent calendar this evening. The first is case number two. SPA 45, map 231, ZCC 160, map 231, ZV number 39, map 231, CUP number 124, map 231, CUP 52, map 214, and SPA number 44, map 231. Our applicant is EDF Renewables Development. This proposed project would involve the construction and operation of a 50-megawatt photovoltaic solar facility on approximately 541.4 acres. As identified in your agenda and on your staff report, the project includes a number of actions which include amendments to the Willow Springs specific plan, a few changes in zone classification, zone variances, and then conditional use permits to authorize the construction of the facility. The staff recommendation is to advise the planning commission to recommend to the board of supervisors to adopt the Section 15091 findings of fact and Section 15093 statement of overriding considerations, adopt mitigation, measuring, and reporting program, approve amendments to the land resettlement of the Willow Springs specific plans requested, enact ordinance and adopt resolution approving the zone changes requested, approve conditional use permit subject to the recommended conditions, approve amendment to the circulation element of the Willow Springs specific plans requested, and adopt the suggested findings as set forth in the draft resolution. The next item on consent this evening is case number three. This is GPA number four, map 195, and GPA number five, map 212. Our applicant for this project is the solar, sorry, the Enterprise Solar Storage LLC project by Terigen. This project, or this proposed project, includes two amendments to the circulation element of the Kern County general plan to remove and to reclassify section and midsection lines within the boundary of a previously approved enterprise solar storage project. The proposed requests are identified for you in your addendum and in your staff report. The staff recommendation is to adopt Section 15091 findings of fact and Section 15093 statement of overriding considerations, adopt the mitigation monitoring and reporting plan, approve amendments to the circulation element of the Kern County general plan as requested, and adopt the suggested findings as set forth in the attached draft resolution. That completes the reading of the consent calendar tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Is there any member of the audience that would like to speak on any of these items? If you do, they will be removed from the consent agenda and heard in their regular order. Is there any member of the commission that would like to remove any of these items? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion from the commission on these items.
If there are no objections, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read into the record.
And I'll second.
Please vote on screen.
Four ayes, one absent. Motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy, is there a right to appeal on either of these?
Mr. Chairman, there is not. These actions were both recommendations by your commission. They will be set at the Kern County Board of Supervisors September general plan amendment window, which I believe is September 23rd.
Thank you. Public presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons desiring to address the commission on any matter not on tonight's agenda. Speakers are limited to two minutes. If you want to speak, please come up and state your name for the record. Seeing none, we'll move on to public hearing. First item you hear tonight is item number one. Is the applicant or representative present?
Yes, they are, Mr. Chairman.
Is there people in the audience that want to speak for or against this? Staff, can you please give the staff report?
Thank you, Chair Dunbar, and good evening commissioners. This evening's proposal is a conditional use permit to allow two different operations on the project site. The first is the operation of an agricultural trucking facility, and the second is a seasonal almond shell storage and distribution facility on an approximate five-acre parcel in the NR5 district. The applicant is Marmigos LLC by Vanderpool and Associates. The site is located on the south side of Snow Road, approximately 620 feet east of Enos Lane in the Rosedale area. The surrounding area would be described as rural residential mixed with agricultural uses and a small oil well drilling company southeast of the site, further from the site to the south are agricultural tree groves. The properties around the site include several single-family dwellings with horse and animal corrals and large accessory structures to the south and the west, and properties to the north contain a commercial business with a storage yard and tree groves to the east. The project site contains a mobile home that is being used by a private residential renter and is not part of the proposal. A 420-square-foot commercial coach office is currently on site with accessory structures. A six-foot-high masonry wall exists along the north, south, and west property lines, and a six-foot-high chain link fence is located along the east boundary. Access to the project site is provided via Snow Road through two chain-link rolling gates onto the property. The area of Snow Road where the proposal is located is unpaved and unimproved. This site and the surrounding parcels that are zoned NR5 were previously approved in March of 1984 through an amendment of a zone map, a zone change from A to NR5, and an exclusion of boundaries of an agricultural preserve nine. Parcel map 7111 was recorded shortly after, in May 1984, that created four, five parcels, four, five acre parcels, excuse me, that were intended for the new property owners of the parcels to operate by right uses such as small agricultural operations or mineral and petroleum operations, and then construct single-family dwellings as an accessory to a permitted use. The project site in particular is parcel number two of parcel map 7111. In October 1985, the permit was final to allow for the mobile home that is currently on site that was approved for caretaker purposes on the project site. There have been multiple violations opened and closed on the subject property beginning in 2021. The violations were an agricultural trucking business and an almond hole storage and distribution business operating prior to the benefit of land use approval. Because of the violations, the current applicant has submitted a conditional use permit application in late 2021 for the storage of the almond holes and a trailer drop-off yard for the subject property. Due to the length of inactivity of time from the applicant with the conditional use permit application, staff terminated the case in March of 2023. Code compliance was not informed of the termination, however, and therefore the violation activity continued. Complaints were filed again, and code compliance responded, and the applicant then submitted the conditional use permit you see before yourself today in June of 2023 for the same proposal to allow the operation of the almond hole shell storage and distribution business and the agricultural truck parking on the subject property. The applicant has stated that the masonry wall was installed around the site to potentially reduce the impacts of generated dust to the neighboring parcels. It should be noted that this installation took place prior to any discretionary decision or permits being completed as part of the land use process. In October of 2023, the code compliance case was closed for abatement of all violations on site, and staff has conducted a site visit and has confirmed that violations remain abated. The current proposal tonight is, one, the agricultural facility, the agricultural trucking facility with a maximum of 21 trucks, and the commercial livestock feed and distribution of the seasonal almond shell and storage on the property from August to March. As described by the applicant, the agricultural trucking facility will only be utilized for trucks directly related to the applicant's agricultural business and for overnight parking if needed by the owner and operator who pull the trailers owned by Marmastro Transport, Inc. The applicant does not propose general public use for this project site. Drivers will have a gate code and access to the site 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Two corporate officers will run the day-to-day business operation out of the 420-square-foot commercial coach office that is currently on site and on show, and, excuse me, the operate, the operate the equipment and unload and unload the product as it comes in and out through the commercial coach. As shown on the site plan, the project will have a maximum of 21 truck and trailer parking stalls for the purpose of maintenance, loading and unloading, and the trucking facility, for the trucking facility, excuse me. For the almond hole storage and distribution operation, the applicant proposes to bring almond holes and shells to the property from local, local farmers and house them for commercial dairy feed and will be mixed and stored outside on the open ground. Storage of almond holes and shells in this is seasonal and begin in August and September and continues through March, February to March, depending on the harvest. Four to five daily semi-truck loads are estimated to be moved onto the facility for storage, and each truck load weighs an approximate 24 tons. Two stockpiles of material are proposed not to exceed 1,000 tons in each pile. Grinding or alterations are not part of this proposal while in storage, however, mixing is required to keep combustibility low for the almond holes. Almond holes and shells will be delivered to the dairies as feed is purchased. Deliveries of the same four to five loads in the storage will be loaded and delivered as needed. Staff has received several comments and, sorry, several comments from county, county divisions, and one comment in opposition from Ms. Strickland, a neighboring property owner south of the project. Along with concerns, the commenter has submitted photographs and multiple videos of the proposal during the time which the applicant was operating in violation. Additionally, multiple documents were submitted related to prior violations on the subject, on the subject property, including family medical records and horse breeding medical records submitted in connection to the dust that has been created on site. The commenter's primary, primary concerns were, are excessive dust generated from the, from the hauling operation, mixing, loading, and unloading, and agricultural trucks maneuvering on dirt or decomposed granite, dust and noise from trucks coming in and out of the site 24 hours a day and left to idle all night, and three, animal disturbance from the noise and dust. The commenter owns a permitted by right single-family dwelling with horse breeding operation. Another neighboring property owner to the north provided comment regarding the impact of increased traffic at the intersection of Enos Lane as the speed limit at Enos Lane is 55 miles per hour and a traffic control device such as a signal does not exist at the intersection of Snow Road and Enos Lane. However, a stop sign does exist there. The commenter has concerns regarding semi-trucks waiting to turn left onto Enos Lane with concerns of a greater risk of collisions in that spot. Excuse me. As part of this department's review of proposals and making recommendations, staff must consider many perspectives, review planned goals and policies that are meant to guide development, and look at the evidence of what is the greatest probability of results given the specifics of a proposal. Recommendations of approval by staff for a conditional use permit application can redundantly be said. It is conditional upon how the evidence of the project can demonstrate compliance with the basis of approval. The elements of the proposal should confirm the following: consistency with the general and specific plan goals and policies, that it meets the zoning ordinance purpose and requirements, and the proposal will not be detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the public or the property or the residents in the vicinity. Simply put, the project must be compatible with the surrounding area. Staff reviews the compatibility aspects with the surrounding properties, and this is essential criteria to consider, especially when a proposal could potentially produce negative impacts to the surrounding area. One question staff asks is, what are the intended uses for the area according to the specific or general plan? Is there a history in the area that can explain what the intended uses were? With that analysis presented by staff, a decision-making authority may approve or conditionally approve an application. In order to keep the proposals and staff's findings straight tonight, I'm going to first talk about staff's analysis of the agricultural trucking operation, and then I'm going to speak about the proposed almond hole storage operation. In reviewing the goals and policies of the Western Rosedale specific plan in relation to the trucking proposal, staff believes the proposal meets several goals and policies that strike a balance as adopted by the plan to retain agricultural uses while including a commercial, a commercial component because the proposal is limited to a maximum of 21 trucks. Staff believes the proposal, the proposed agricultural trucking facility can provide a surface for agricultural needs in the Kern County area and provide employment opportunities under a limited scope and be compatible with neighboring properties. The site is conditionally suited as there is space for the proposed maximum 21 trucks and is surrounded by existing agricultural land use, use designation and uses. Staff has included recommended conditions of approval from other county divisions that have reviewed this proposal specifically addressing the unpaved and unimproved portion of Snow Road by requiring improvements including paving, paving that portion of the, of Snow Road to standards that would include a drive approach, asphalt, concrete, and necessary tie-ins to Enos Lane. These improvements do not include sidewalk, curb, and gutter. These improvements would address, however, the impact of large, heavy, daily truck trips to and from the portion of the site where the trucks would enter and exit the site to Enos Lane. Semi-trucks facilities in general create noise due to reverse maneuvering, idling, and general maintenance. This is why these uses are typically located in industrial zone. Historically, this department has recommended limits for operations of agricultural trucking facilities within the vicinity of residences because of the noise generation. Therefore, staff recommends operation times from 5:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. daily and restricting types of amplified noise to 8:00 a.m. to be allowed. Truck maintenance is not part of the definition of an agricultural facility and is not listed as a permitted use or conditional use in the A or A1 districts. However, staff has considered that truck repair such as tire changes or potential low maintenance should be considered as part of the conditions of approval. In addition, to keep the area and the use contained to reduce the disturbance to the residents and the animals in the immediate area, the county managing engineer has written a legal description for the area where the trucks would be kept on site. That would include fencing with or without slats to be installed around the area. The area where the trucks will be maneuvering and parked will be conditioned to include paving that will eliminate the dust. Additionally, the existing wall will act as a buffer to other properties. Staff believes with these recommendations, the disturbance to the animals on neighboring properties will be significantly reduced. With this in mind, staff believes with the conditions of approval, the agricultural facility, trucking facility does meet the criteria for approval. facility, trucking facility does meet the criteria for approval. When reviewing the seasonal almond hull shell storage and distribution facility, staff believes the proposal does not meet the goals and policies of Western Rosedale specific plan, because the proposed use is more intense in terms of producing impacts that will not be retaining the agricultural uses while encouraging urban products, projects mixed with rural residential developments. The type of urban projects mentioned in the plan were limited to small agricultural-related activities, such as small orchards, small oil and petroleum operations, and specialty crops, raising livestock or poultry, or small nurseries, whereas the proposed almond hauling storage would cause a significant amount of noise, dust, and air impacts to the neighboring properties beyond what the small agricultural operation would create. According to the parcel map file, this area was intended for residents to have permitted uses on the site under the Natural Resources District and then construct a single-family dwelling that would be accessory to that use. This was allowed at the time of the parcel map recordation. Thus, the development in the area is similar to that intent. And during the time, during that time, the NR, uh, district did not allow agricultural trucking facilities or feed storage sales as permitted uses, nor with a conditional use permit. During the past 20 years, however, the NR district was amended to include agricultural trucking facilities and feed and storage sales only with the approval of a conditional use permit, permit, which is dependent upon the proposal meeting the criteria of being compatible with the surrounding area. Staff believes the proposed almond hull storage operation will be too intense and create excessive amount of dust that will impact existing neighboring properties. Therefore, the proposed facility is not, is inconsistent with the purpose of the NR district. Concerns were raised about a large amount of dust in particular matter that becomes airborne during the almond hull and shell mixing, loading, and unloading. Staff has reviewed the photographs and video submitted of the operation prior to obtaining land use approval, and the dust would appear to have an impact to the neighboring properties in excess to the surrounding permitted uses in the vicinity of the site. Staff did not, did find a similar case located approximately 29 miles northwest of the current site in the area of Lost Hills. This proposal was approved in August of 2023 and was an agricultural by-product processing, processing facility on a 99-acre portion of a 300-acre property zoned A where sensitive receptors were over a mile away. This type of operation is appropriately suited for a large agricultural property where dust, noise, and other potential nuisances will not impact sensitive receptors. The operation of the seasonal almond shell storage requires constant movement of the shell, of the almond and shells. Daily mixing is required to keep combustibility down. Loading and unloading of the byproducts will create additional dust and noise that will be detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the property and the residents in the vicinity. Staff has determined that the request, as proposed, does not meet the minimum requirements of the zoning ordinance. It does not provide the necessary assurances that implementation of the operation will not be detrimental to the health, safety, and welfare of the residents in the vicinity, and it does not provide the necessary assurances that the operation would be able to comply with all applicable laws for fire safety, excessive dust, and ordinances. Therefore, staff does not recommend approval of the almond shell storage and distribution proposal. Your commission should be aware that Ms. Strickland has submitted multiple videos to staff of the neighboring operation again while it was operating in violation. There are a total of 15 minutes of, uh, several different videos, so in order to present the best videos, staff has selected four videos to play following this, uh, presentation. Should your commission decide to view more, or the remaining videos, they are available tonight. In addition to the videos, Ms. Strickland has provided staff with further comments regarding opposition to the project, and those comments have been distributed to your, uh, commission this evening. Therefore, the department's recommendation, recommendation is to, A, approve conditional use permit for the agricultural trucking facility, subject to the recommended commission, uh, conditions of approval, and adopt the suggested findings as set forth in the attached draft resolution, and B, deny the seasonal hull almond shell storage facility in accordance with the suggested findings as set forth in the attached draft resolution. This concludes staff's presentation this evening, and, um, the video can play at any time. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Prior to the, to video, if I could just add, um, one or two clarifications to Ms. Simon's, um, presentation this evening, because I do have a revised recommendation I'd like to, to read, um, in terms of some of the project.
Go ahead, thank you.
So, real quick, I just wanted to touch base about the compatibility, too, and I know that it was mentioned, but, um, just for clarity, when the NR zone was created and when this property in general was designated NR, residential users were allowed as a by-right use, which is why those properties were developed as such. Since that time, as Ms. Simon had indicated, the NR district has changed, and residential uses are no longer authorized as a by-right use within that NR district. So you have a unique situation here that you may not come across very often, where you have a proposed use in our district that is very close to other property that is residentially built is, uh, in our district as well. And then, as Ms. Simon said, um, while staff does recommend approval of the, uh, ag trucking facility, um, we have a condition in there that says no maintenance is, is authorized. I do have one clarification to condition, um, two C, just because there are some incidental repairs that may be necessary to allow a trucking facility to operate. So staff would be recommending a revised condition to two C, which would read, "All major truck maintenance and repairs shall be prohibited. Incidental minor repairs, as determined by the Planning and Natural Resources Director, necessary to ensure basic vehicle operations such, such as tire changes, taillight and/or windshield wiper replacements, are authorized between the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. No public repair operations are permitted." So again, this is for trucks that are using the site. If they needed to get a tire change or something along those lines, that can be done, but it is not open to the public where people can bring in other trucks or do any type of repairs along those lines. So that would be a revised change to condition two C, um, that would be presenting to your commission. And if now we could have, uh, the, the videos played before your, uh, commission takes public testimony.
Thank you. Uh, does the applicant have an opening statement or any comments?
Good evening. My name is Dino Mastrochinque. I'm the owner of More Migos LLC, which is the property owner, and I'm also the owner, president of More Mastro Transport Incorporated, which is the trucking. After seeing those videos, um, it's not all the time that we're up that early in the morning. The, the reason why we do what we do is because most facilities have standard hours, and the reason why we, uh, take the product into our property is that we can better, benefit our drivers to get an earlier start, to get, uh, more loads in for the day. It's not an everyday thing that that happens that early in the morning. Usually it's between, um, you know, eight, eight to five. We're not there that late. Um, that's probably an isolated video, but, um, we, we're more interested in having the permission to have the trucking company than we are the, the almond storage facility at this time, because our trucks are scattered throughout the valley, uh, where certain guys are paying a couple hundred dollars a month in different locations, and the reason why we bought the property was to get everything in-house under one roof. So the, that is more, that is more important to our, our business plan than the, the storage of the almond shells at this time. So we would, we would seek the permission to operate our trucking company there, to do our maintenance, tires, brakes, tarps. Uh, we don't own any trucks. We have, um, trailers. We hire owner-operators that have their own trucks, and then we broker all their loads, and we do all the paperwork inside the, the 420-square-foot office. It's just me and my business partner. He's the vice president, I'm the president. We don't have any employees. We, like I said, we, we, uh, have all 1099 owner-operators that own their own truck. There'll be no maintenance as far as motors or stuff, anything on the trucks, because we don't own any, but we do have to maintain our trailers, which includes the hydraulics, the floor that operates, tires, brakes, tarps, stuff of that nature, and that we always only do between eight and five. In the summertime, because we have longer hours of daylight, we're usually there till six or seven, but nothing later than that. We don't make a lot of noise. We're very respectful of our neighbors. We put a block wall, which is one thing I wanted to add. The east side of the property that was chain-linked is all block wall now. So the entire perimeter of the property is now block wall. So we're, we put in, uh, almost $40,000, $50,000 worth of, uh, um, grindings on the, the half of the property that was not used for the storage, for where all the trucks traveled, to reduce the, uh, the amount of dust. It's maintained, it's level, it's, it's in really good shape. I brought pictures if you'd like to see. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Um, I invite those who are opposed to this request, uh, to come forward and be heard. You'll have two minutes, and if you want to state your name, please. Um, is there anyone in support that'd like to come up? Anyone else? But to the applicant, do you, are you good with what you said, or do you have a closing statement?
I think I'm good.
Okay. Um, would staff like to make any additional comments on this?
No, Mr. Chairman. Other than we're available to answer any questions your commission may have.
I have a few questions.
Go ahead.
Um, item in the, or I should know the title of this. Um, in the draft, uh, resolution, the num, the page number is five, and so it's 4G outdoor lighting plan. I remember in other projects, we have reviewed the outdoor lighting plan, um, and then some we don't, but in this case, it might be important to review it. Is there a reason we don't have it? What is your recommendation, Mr. Murphy?
Commissioner Skidmore through the chair. So when a building permit is submitted, um, or when an operation commences, um, any project is subject to our development standards for the outdoor lighting plan. So whether we review it now, a plan will be reviewed to make sure that any lights that are proposed are shielded away from the neighbors, and then all shielded down. So if you're asking me, I don't believe that one is necessary to look at now, because I do believe that prior to commencement of new operations, they will submit their lighting plan, and then it will go through the normal review to make sure that all of the lights are shielded and things along those lines.
Okay, thank you. Um, the only other thing I have is just comments for potential, uh, recommendation for changes, and that is just one of them on page four, and it is 2A2, um, and this is the hours of operation. You know, I, I would like to see a reduction from 11:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. I think 11:00 p.m. is a little bit excessive, uh, especially operating seven days a week. Otherwise, all of the other items I see no issue with. That is it for me.
Anyone else have comments?
Yeah, I'll make a quick comment. Now, I'd look, uh, thanks for the presentation, staff. As always, a fantastic job. Looks like the videos were, you know, prior to what we're discussing this evening, those were issues that have long been abated. I think the conditions that have been placed on the project are appropriate to make sure those things don't happen again. Um, I'm in agreement with Commissioner Skidmore. I would agree with her changes. I think that makes sense, and so I think it's a good project.
Yeah, I have, uh, I guess the, in the, I guess that'd be a question for you, sir. Can you come on up again real quick? My question is, with the roads that's coming in with all those trucks and stuff, it's still kicking up a lot of dust. Has that road that's coming in been put gravel?
RNO fishing was a business that was there prior to us. I do believe they paved. I, I, it's, I don't think it's a county-maintained road. I think they paved from Enos Lane into their facility. It's cut short. It, it probably turns in where our block wall begins, so from that point to our entrance, it's maybe 30, 40 feet. Uh, we put the decomposed granite and compacted it with a, with a, uh, roller and water and to minimize the dust. It's, it's a solid road. There's no potholes, there's no nothing. It's, um, I know the staff came out to, to take a look at the site, but I think it's a pretty decent road for, for what it is.
Okay, and then the internal side where all the trucks are coming in and turning, it's still, I guess, still all the granite?
Yeah, and then, and it continues into the yard.
Because I'm really concerned with the dust.
Yeah. No, almost half of the yard is all decomposed granite. We, we covered it from wall to wall. Everywhere the truck will drive, it's on top of the decomposed granite. Nothing is, is touching dirt where it would make more dust. And then we also, the reason why we, uh, our first permit expired is we were in the process of, uh, drilling a new water well. Couple, three, four years ago, we had, in the middle of the drought, our well went dry. We had to dig a new well, which was permitted, and, and that went longer than we anticipated, and then the, uh, the application had expired, not known, not knowing to us. So we do now have water, we can, we can spray it on, on top of the granite, you know, but...
Okay, and I, I'd like to make that, that, exactly. I was just going to make that suggestion, if you could, you know, bring the water in there occasionally as a maintenance.
Absolutely.
And I'd like to make that as a condition suggestion as well.
And then also one thing, the, the 5:00 a.m., a lot of our guys start at 3:00 in the morning, and, and she had said, the lady who complained, that we idle our trucks all night. Nobody parks there, nobody sleeps on their trucks, and there was, at any time, a truck idling all night. They go there at 3:00 in the morning, they park their personal car, they do their pre, pre-trip test, they fire up their truck, and they take off. It's a matter of minutes, not hours. There's no idling truck ever, and then, and it's not seven days a week. Uh, these guys work pretty much Monday through Friday, and then we do maintenance on Saturday, very, very limited on Sunday, but... very limited on Sunday. But the 7:00 o'clock or the 9:00 o'clock, like she said, it's, that's not a problem. We're not there past 6, 7:00 o'clock during the days of the week anyways. So that's not a problem for us to...
Yeah, I agree. And I thank staff again for the wonderful presentation, as well as I agree with Commissioner Skidmore, is that we go ahead and limit those hours down a little bit. I would like to add on to that with the water maintenance, with the, be able to keep that down as well.
Commissioner Oliver, can I touch base about that? Because I think there might be a confusion on the applicant's part.
Okay.
So staff has reviewed the roads and the site. Public Works does not believe it's fully built out. And this project is conditioned to build and construct asphalt from Enos Lane to their entrance, and then their site, where the trucks will go, are also conditioned to pave that. So the decomposed granite that's there now is not sufficient. And before any of these options could occur, the project is conditioned that they have to construct that, those roadways. The decomposed granite, as they have now, is not sufficient for addressing the dust.
And I like that even better. So what I would add on is that a requirement of the conditional use permit is that additional 30 or 60 feet, or whatever it is, from where they end to where your driveway is must be asphalt paved, and then wherever those trucks are must be asphalt, is be my suggestion, Mr. Chair. And rest of the commissioners, you can come on on that as well. And then the reduction of the time what Commissioner Skidmore has to do, I think would be fine. That's all I have.
Then can I add one thing also? As far as the storage of the almond hauls, at this time, we're willing not to store those. Until we can come up with a plan that's, can be submitted, that will eliminate most of the dust, whether it be enclosed building or three-sided, something that will help capture the dust. Water, unfortunately, is the enemy of this product, and it combusts like compost. It could ignite and catch on fire. We don't, so what, we can't use water. But at some point in the future, I don't know what could be cost-effective for us, but we don't want to just say we're never going to do it. We would like to re-approach it at a time that we can control the dust in a better form. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Murphy, I guess, kind of going back to Commissioner Oliver, is there, do we have a...
If you would like to see it, I think I know what you're going to ask. You want to know exactly where those conditions are?
Well, just is there a length? He's wanting to add footage to it. I'm just trying to, do we need to modify it in some?
I don't believe, so if you look at condition 6A3, it specifically says, "Under encroachment issued by Kern County Public Works for orderly development, construct snow road from Enos Lane to the west property of type A subdivision." So clearly, if there's something there already, that's already constructed, we're not going to redo any work that's already there. So I don't believe that we need to actually incorporate any changes to that particular condition, as it'll kind of go through and from that aspect of it. And then the vehicle maneuvering, just to make full clarity, that is condition 6D, where it talks about all vehicle and semi-truck parking approach areas need to be surfaced with one of the following: two inches of asphalt concrete, or three and one-half inches of Portland cement concrete. So that is all addressed there. And then, I know that a motion has not officially been made yet, and I know that we talked about changing the hours. I just wanted to remind your commission, whoever makes the motion, I would ask that you also authorize the revision written to staff about condition 2C, just to make sure it's clear that minor incidental repairs, assuming your commission is in agreement with that, can be authorized as part of that particular project. Because as it's written right now, it says no repairs, and we want to make sure we're as clear as possible. And if there's incidental stuff, we want to make sure that that's allowed. So whoever makes the motion, if it is your commission's desire, I'd like you to include that as part of the recommendation as well.
And Mr. Murphy, we discussed, dust is 5A adequate for what Commissioner Oliver was chatting about?
I believe it is, because at this time, again, assuming that you, the staff goes forward, the almond hauling is being recommended for denial. So any of the vehicle maneuvering and things that are being done on the site are all going to be done on the area that's concrete. So I do believe that it's efficient, and that could apply to just basic construction and things along those lines, too. So I don't believe any changes are necessary for that either.
Okay. And last thing, 6P talks about the chain-link fence. It sounds like the applicant has already addressed that. Should we remove that, or does it kind of double up the fencing?
So I would ask Ms. Simon to make sure that I'm correct when I say this. But when I look at this chain-link fence, this one is referring to a chain-link fence internal to the site that's going to boundary, show the boundaries where the trucks can go. We want to make sure that the trucks are not moving internally on the site. They're allowed as part of our recommendation, that they can only be on that western half. And so that chain-link fence in that particular condition is referring a little bit more so to make sure that internally, they have some sort of fenced-off area where the trucks would go. Is that correct, Ms. Simon?
That is correct. And the legal is written into condition 2, I believe. Let me double check. Yes, it is written into number 2, and then followed up later.
Okay. And then Ms. Simon, 7E also mentions a chain-link fence on the east side of the property. Do we need to adjust that based off of the comments from the applicant?
I would suppose, if you'd like to get rid of chain-link fence and replace it with masonry walls, since the applicant said that he has replaced the chain-link fence on the east property line with masonry wall, that's just to make sure that the masonry wall and the perimeter area is kept in good condition continuously.
Can we just edit to say?
We can't. Sorry. I just want to make sure that we, because again, I don't want to go through with, can we put the aerial up? Because there's the project site boundaries, and then there's where the trucks and everything can go. I believe that this condition, where it talks about the chain-link fence, if we're talking about the east side, if Ms. Barker could point to the east side of the project site. So that is between, no, nope, 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 east side. That is between the entire project site and the property to the east. And I believe, unless it is your commission's desire to make that block wall, I believe that that is still chain-link fence. Is that correct?
No, that is block wall.
Oh.
The entire perimeter of the five acres is all block wall.
I stand corrected, then. So we can make that little typo change to make sure that it reads it's the masonry block wall. It's already there.
Can I, can we just say and/or masonry wall?
Yes, that's fine.
What I just want to prevent is having some legal element that now requires him to add a chain-link fence for whatever crazy reason. Is, can we go back to 6P really quickly? Is that required, necessary? Is it just a stipulation that we're putting in place? To me, it feels a little bit excessive. I understand the motive behind it.
Which condition, I'm sorry?
This is that chain-link fence internal to keep the trucks in one side of the property.
So Commissioner Skidmore, if you don't believe you want to have an internal one, I'm completely fine with that condition. We have a legal description, just so we're talking clear, that specifies where exactly the trucks would be maneuvered. Clearly, he's going to have to do some improvements on that area, so we can include that in there as well. I do know that there's an existing house inside the boundaries, too. So, you know, it kind of helps separate. Now, I think it's for, you know, they, property owner has decided who rents it to them and everything along those lines. But I believe that's up to you. I mean, we're comfortable removing it if that's your commission's desire, but its purpose was just to help provide clarity as to where the trucks could go.
This doesn't seem like there needs to be a purpose for 6P. Right?
I feel like it's excessive. I understand it's trying to keep the trucks on the one property line, probably away from the residential western side. But I feel like it's an additional cost burden that seems excessive.
Yeah.
There's also like wood fence around where the house is. So it's segregated off from the property. There's wood fence on both sides of the property in between the block walls, running, running from the north to the south, and then from the, all the way to the east. You can see in this picture the wood fence around the, around the house.
For the applicant, is there any type of fencing on Snow Road? Is that block as well, or is it?
It's block wall as well.
Okay. So you have gates or an opening?
The two entrances. There's a double gate for the trucks to come in on our side, and there's a single gate for the residents to go in. And it's entirely block wall.
Do we have a timeframe for these, Mr. Murphy, for these items to be completed?
It's probably, I believe most of them are generally prior to the commencement of operations. So there could be some things he may or may not have been a great improvement for, but clearly, all of it has to be done before he commences with the parking of the trucks on site.
Thank you.
Can I just ask one question? Because we have the grindings down, and with the application of water...
Will you come to the mic?
There's really not a lot of dust on top of that granite. It seems to, for me, it's going to be an exorbitant expense to pave the entire acreage internally for where the trucks are going to park and turn. That's why we put the grindings, the asphalt grindings, and we compacted them down with a steam, whatever they call those things, a steamroller with water. And there's really not a lot of dust. There's not a lot of traffic, you know, the trucks, they leave in the morning, they come back at night. They're not, without them coming in and out to deliver and pick up the almond shells, there's really not going to be a lot of truck traffic. They're going to leave in the morning, come back at night, and park. And that's all it's going to be. It's not going to be a continuous parade of trucks. And we applied for 21, because we own 21 trailers. But at any time, there's only seven or eight, 10 maybe, that park there. Other guys park at their houses, or wherever, you know, wherever they are, or they're on the road all the time. So it's not going to be 21 trucks coming in and out and parading all day long. I mean, I haven't looked into any cost of doing asphalt, but I know that it's going to be pretty expensive, because it's a pretty large area. So I don't know if, with the addition of getting a watering truck, and watering it before they come in, or when they leave, to reduce the dust, in my opinion, it would be sufficient enough. But again, I don't know what, you know, the code is, or what it has to be.
Okay. Thank you. Want to have any comments on that?
Mr. Murphy, in the past, we have allowed for some flexibility of the type of material that we put down in these areas to prevent dust. What are your thoughts or suggestions?
Well, before, before you answer that, can we, if we go that, can we put a time limit on, in regards to, instead of doing a two-year condition for, or whatever, because this is temporary, I think maybe we just do it for 12 months, and let's see how it does. And if it does not, then we're going to have to do the asphalt.
I don't have any comments. I was just here about Mr. Murphy's input.
Mr. Murphy?
Yeah. Mr. Murphy? Let you have.
Four. Sure. I just wanted to double-check something here real quick. Just because I was, okay. So, real quick, the CUP is not a temporary CUP that's being proposed right now. So I just want to make sure it's a permanent CUP. There could be a temporary time period or a time in which it would be good for, but once it's activated. But at the recommendation right now, we're not recommending a temporary CUP. It would be entitled, and as long as they're meeting all the conditions, there would be no requirement for them to come back and ask for any changes in use or things along those lines. Regarding the comment as to the flexibility, staff has recommended in the past, and your commission has taken action, specifically in terms of not necessarily requiring overall paving when it comes to some of these particular sites in the truck. Given the adjacent commercial horse facility, the adjacent homes, staff believed that it was appropriate for this particular case, and so that is why we recommend that condition. Clearly, it's within your commission's jurisdiction to change that, but staff stands by the recommendation as we presented it.
Now, I think, I'm okay with flexibility, as long as the intent can be met, which is to keep that dust down from the neighbor. And I'm wondering how you, how you condition it to where, well, I guess either they do it or they don't, right? And you could, that could be part of the condition. If you'd keep the, if the dust isn't kept down, then you'd have to come back and do something different. I don't know the best way to handle it. Mr. Skidmore, what do you think?
I completely agree with you. I don't, I don't know what the solution might be, but I do feel like we're restricting them in a way that could be very costly.
It will be costly, for sure.
Can you come up to the mic again, please? I mean, is there, is there a compromise in between? I mean, could you oil? I don't know. I mean, I've seen, can you oil it periodically, every few years, or I don't know what the process of that? Would you be open to something like that, somewhere in the middle?
Absolutely. I think that would be more cost-effective to oil it. And then, I don't know, if you, I'll research it. But yeah, if that's going to eliminate having to water it and oil it, we can definitely do that.
Good. And then, Mr. Murphy, can we amend or remove the asphalt stipulation with the maintained oil area?
It looks like it's 6D.
That keeping it, the granite, as long as it's maintained, we put, you know, with the water, or whatever we need to do with that. I'm fine with that, to being able to be flexible that way.
Use the water until we can get it oiled, perhaps, or something like that?
Chairman Dunbar, members of the commission, so we could change it to something along the lines. All vehicle and semi-truck parking area, approach access, and maneuvering areas for the agricultural trucking facility, in consultation with Kern County Public Works, just to make sure we're also not doing something else, shall be surfaced with an appropriate material to ensure the project site continually reduces any dust generated through vehicle maneuvering within the parking area. So you could revise it that way. It does still require consultation, so that clearly, if they do something, if we don't have any issues. But now, the intent would be is, it's not about the structure. It's all about reducing the dust and things along those lines. And then, again, I just, that would be the recommendation, if you wanted to change it from that particular condition.
Okay. I'm fine with that.
And again, just so that we're clear, that does not include Snow Road to the project site as a condition. That is still, you know, it's an access road, and that is still standard concrete paving to improve from the site, Enos Lane to the project site.
That has to be asphalt.
This condition specifically refers to the internal maneuvering area.
So what you're saying is we need to asphalt from where RNO's fishing road turns into his, and then the approach into our gate. That can be done, because that's not, that's not a lot of square footage.
And then the other stuff has to be maintained.
And then we'll maintain with, to reduce the, we want to be good neighbors. We've been doing this for 19 years. We have 35 drivers. 21 have their own truck that pull our trailers, and 14 have their own truck and trailer. We're pretty viable in the ag industry as far as soil amendments, all the farmers of jib, compost, sulfur, wood chips, dairy feed. And we're just, we're getting bigger and bigger as every year that goes by. So we started out with one truck 19 years ago, and we have 30-some drivers now, so.
Yeah, we want, we want to work with you. We want to make sure that you can stay in operations, but we have to be considerate of the places as well. So we're trying to make everything work together.
We want to be a good neighbor. I mean, that's why we bought, we bought the acreage.
And I think that's what we're asking.
We, you know, we've invested over a million dollars in the property between the purchase, the water well, the decomposed granite, the block wall. You know, we're here for a long term. We're not a fly-by-night type of operation, and we don't want to make anybody mad. Ms. Strickland, unfortunately, I think she's going to be mad no matter what. And I guarantee you, you haven't heard the last of her yet, if you do give me the permission to run it. But we're going to try to do the best we can to reduce the dust. We're going to forego the almond storage for now, until we can come out with a better solution to reduce the dust. But to have the operation of the trucking company is very important to us, to return to our property.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay. You want me to attempt to make?
We're going to let Lauren do it.
It's my fault. I'll try. Okay, I'll make a motion with edits to the resolution to include 2A2 agricultural trucking facility shall operate year-round during the approved facility hours of 5:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. 4C, Mr. Murphy, will you read that into the record of how you would like that revised by staff?
Yeah, it's 2AC.
Oh, sorry, 2C. Thank you.
And then actually, as counsel pointed out, we have a continuously complied that has the exact same language in 7I. So this is actually revising both of those conditions. All major truck maintenance and repairs shall be prohibited. Incidental minor repairs, as determined by the Planning and Natural Resources Director, necessary to ensure basic vehicle operations, such as tire changes, taillight and/or windshield repair replacement, are authorized between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. No public repair operations are permitted.
As well as item 6D, edit, and Mr. Murphy, correct me if I don't get it all right. All vehicle and semi-truck area approach access and maneuvering areas for the agricultural All vehicle and semi-truck area, approach access and maneuvering areas for the agricultural trucking facility shall be in consultation with Kern County Public Works, resurfaced to prevent dust and must be continuously maintained in good condition to prevent dust blowing as determined by the Director of the Kern County Planning and Natural Resource Department.
I would actually, and include Kern County Air Pollution Control District, sorry, San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District to that as well, as they have that responsibility as well.
Great. And then removal of 6P. And then 7E will have a slight edit that will state the existing six-foot high masonry wall along the north, south and west property lines and the existing six-foot high chain link and/or masonry fence wall along the east property line shall be continuously maintained in good condition. And I think that is it. That is the motion.
I will second that.
Okay, second, Mr. Oliver, please vote on screen.
Four ayes, one absent, motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy, is there a?
There is. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For projects where the planning commission action is final, those actions are subject to an appeal to the Board of Supervisors by any interested person and no development proposed by any application may be authorized until after the final date of appeal. An appeal may be filed at the Kern County Planning and Natural Resources Department located at 2700 M Street, Suite 100 in Bakersfield, with a filing fee of $562 on forms available at the planning department and on the department's website. The filing must be made within 14 days of and including the date of today's hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. There's no further business. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn, but I have a quick question. On our schedule, it says August 28th, just making sure that is being canceled.
I'm not sure. Usually if we have a cancellation, we would let you know ahead of time. We may not have any items that have been set, so I leave it up to this commission. If you, right now, as of today, we have no items that are scheduled. We have nothing that's continued to it. And so, if your commission wants to cancel that meeting, I think it would be entirely appropriate and we can note that it's canceled here. We will still put a note on our, on the windows like we normally do for a meeting that's canceled, but I appreciate pointing that out so we can make that mentioned at today's hearing.
I think that's an intelligence test.
I'm on, I'm on details tonight, people.
That's an entertaining motion to cancel.
Yeah, I will move to adjourn with the cancellation of August 28th.
I will second that.
Are those tethered together?
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Please stand adjourned.